Any bump.
All right.
Close enough. All meetings order. Let's believe.
To the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any adjustments to the prepared agenda?
Yes, I have a board report for the RSU Finance Committee.
Okay. All right, anything else? With those additions then.
Who was amended?
Well, in favor. Public forum, gentlemen. Anything, non-agenda items? Nothing? Okay. Minutes, March 14. Be approved.
Motion to approve is submitted.
All in favor? So approved. Board reports, Velma, RSU Finance.
Well, after many days and many hours, it all comes down to these two pages. The bottom line is that the RSU budget, as it has gone before, the school board, right now, is up 2.99%. And of that, consolidated is up 14.67%, and Mildred L-Day is up 15.66%. And that is because they added a lot extra for electricity.
They added a what?
For electricity, because they are both under central main power. And because of the extra costs for electricity, they've added a lot of extra under that line for both of those schools. Let's see, what else is? I can read you what each line is. Athletics total is up 4.19%. The school board total is down 10%, and that's because they reduced legal again. They've increased the contingency plan. And curriculum total is down, debt service is down 15%. Let's see, ELL total is up 108%, and a lot of that is due to the fact that they are paying for all of the extra tests, instead of having parents have to pay for them. Food service total is up a little bit, at 1.87%. Health total is up 8.73%. And HR total, looks like it's up a lot, because it's up 63%, but that's because the Human Resources Department has been developing over the past year and is still in the process of developing programs in about every way, shape, and form, that they are need for human resources and to help with the teachers and everything else. The, let's see, what else is up here? Technology is up 23%. And the schools themselves, and when it comes right down to the actual totals, salaries from last year to this year are up 5.62%, benefits are up 5%, debt service, of course, is down 15%, supplies is only up 3%, lease repair maintenance is up 19%, tuition is down 11%, energy costs are up 35%, professional services is only up 3.58%, capital property up 4.68%, insurance, right now, is only up 0.99%. The contingency plan, which they usually put in 200, they are proposing putting in 400 this year, just mainly because of the cost of energy. And that leaves us with a bottom-line grand total of 2.99%. And they do not know yet how that divides up among the three towns. That was my other question, and I couldn't get that answer today, is how that percentage divides up among three towns.
Yeah, I got a little bit of information on that. It appears that our contribution to the RSU, the upcoming year, listen, the number changes, is going to go down, $144,000. Last year, we were $5,671.20. This year, they're proposing $5,526,99. So, though they're having adjustments within the budget, I think their revenue projections and various changes in overall values on the three communities has made a substantial difference in what we're going to be contributing. The other factor, and I didn't know this until I asked the question last week, was I didn't have the adult education number, and they don't do adult education any longer. That's removed from their budgets altogether. So, that was about $62,000 to $65,000 that went, that rolled into this contribution. So, unless, unless, after the second reading, there are substantial changes, the numbers that Velma provided to you are accurate numbers, because it's 2.66 overall, but our contribution looks like it's going to down a bit.
Yep.
Good news.
They get some federal funds, too, right? They get extra federal funds, I think that's what helps.
I think they get a lot more revenue than they had initially anticipated. I think that is helping them quite a bit in these contributions that each municipality has to put in.
The budget itself, for '22, is $52,910,886. And proposed for '23 is $54,494,614. A dollar change of $1,583,728.
Thank you.
Thank you, Velma. Jason.
Yeah, we met last Thursday night.
I'm sorry, Jack, do you have a question?
Nope. Sorry.
You have to turn that one on, Jack.
Yeah, we just wanted to make two points included in that.
Jason, you started. Sam Hall, Henry Ingersson, myself, and we included Mindy Goodrum. You guys remember Mindy? She presented us originally. She's kind of the head of the York County Soil and Water. She joined our meeting. And we more or less invited her because we wanted to know what our role as the Arundel Representing Board of the River Committee would be. And so she, she didn't give us really a definitive answer, but we kind of collaborated and came up with, like, our role would be education to the public, you know, assisting the Soil and Water District in their role with testing. She let us know that the first round of grants that is available is going to be strictly agricultural-based. So they're finding that a significant pollution problem, especially in the Arundel Corridor, is agricultural-based, be it farms that are close to the river, that have a certain amount of head of cattle, as well as store a certain amount of soils within a certain diameter to the river. But she indicated that a lot more extensive testing is needed before any of this can take off. I asked her what the role of the municipality would be in this whole process, because that was never really mentioned. And apparently, all the grants through DEP for mitigation have to go through the town of Arundel. So, the town of Arundel has to be the one to submit for the grant funding. And there's some certain criteria that has to be met. Again, needs to have more testing in order to find out exactly where the pollution is coming from. Income, income she brought up, so you can only make so much money in order to qualify for this grant program, and the amount was really low. I want to say it's, you can't, you can't make more than $40,000 a year.
Is that for the, is that for the farmer who's close to the river?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I kind of bounced it off her, if there was anything the municipality could do to assist her in this next step. And she's at a roadblock, really, with funding for the testing. So I mentioned to her that I would bring it to this board prior to going to the Budget Board, to see how everybody felt in regards to throwing some money towards this next round of testing, which really needs to be done in order for this whole thing to get going. She, I asked her how much she thought the testing would be, and it's kind of a, there's two types of testing. There's a DNA test, which really she wants to do, because it kind of, it kind of skips another round of testing, so to speak. So there's another avenue to take, but in a roundabout way, you eventually have to end at this DNA testing. And what that does is it basically, it tells them whether it's animal-based or human-based, which is the waste going into the river. That's like, the end result will tell them if it's, you know, human waste or animal waste through this DNA testing. And she thought it'd be roughly around $6,000 to $7,500 to do this next round of testing. And that was going to, that was going to highlight the five major impacted points that they've already tested, so like Duck Brook, Ward Brook, and three spots along the Kennybuck River. So again, I told her that I would bring this to the board, and I said, no matter what it's, you know, what the board says, it's going to have to go, it's going to have to be a, probably a warrant article to see if the town wants to spend the money, you know. So I told her I'd bring it up again at the budget meeting this Thursday.
Yes, this Thursday.
Just to see how everybody felt. And I don't know how you guys feel on the board, but it didn't seem like a whole lot of money, and if it's the next thing that needs to be done.
My question on it, Jason, is, is this, for lack of a better term, seed money? So, this particular testing can be done, so then we can apply for the grants as we have the analysis to tell us what we need a substantial amount of money for?
Yeah. I also, I have a good friend that works at UNE, and I asked her towards the end of the meeting, I said, does UNE have any involvement in this testing? Or, and she said that was going to be my first stop, was UNE, to see if they had any resources available, or if they could help us out with testing. So I reached out to him the very next morning, and he is 100% on board. I guess there's a line of kids that are looking for, like, clinical hours to help with their education, and he said those kids will jump on that in a heartbeat. And so that, that amount, you know, 6,7500, that might come down significantly if UNE can jump on and assist with the testing.
Now, is this going to go on in all the other municipalities that are budding up the Kennybuck River?
Yeah, so Arundel was the, we were the first group to reach out to Mindy and ask, you know, what our involvement should be and needs to be. And she's expecting in the next couple of months that Lyman and Kennybuck were going to reach out to her as well. And we're trying to put together a three-town meeting and get everybody on board here to see, you know, there's really, we all mentioned it that night, that there's really no point if one town takes off and does all this work, and the other two towns aren't on board with it, then it's... Right, you know what I mean? It's kind of a three-part process here. But I really don't think that the other two towns are going to kick this to the curb. I really don't. There's, we're the smallest board, as far as, as far as people on the committee, and the other two towns have far more people on their boards. So, there seems to be significant involvement in all three communities, so.
Great.
I don't recall, I mean, I've read that before, but I don't recall. Do you recall that, what, percentage-wise, what has been identified in Arundel as far as pollution to that river?
We asked her that question, and it's, it was a tough answer, without more testing. That's been kind of the series of questions that we've either emailed her or bounced off each other, was, eventually, you must be able to trace this upstream and find the ultimate source of where this is coming from.
They talked, in the report, they certainly talked about specific, roughly some specific areas.
Yeah. Five have been identified in Arundel. Two of those five have been identified as the agricultural base, meaning they were tested right, directly next to farms, upriver from the farms. The testing wasn't as high as it was below the farms. So, they've more or less already kind of zoned in as to where it's coming from, but it's just, it kind of needs that next series of testing.
From my perspective, I get it, certainly one of the towns, but, you know, anything will help.
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're doing some, there are things, pollution is going on from our town, so we need to do our part to fix it, whether we have the top on.
It's, I mean, it's really, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out in our town where the two farms are that are close to these rivers and what's happening. I mean, it's, it's pretty obvious. One of them's been on the news for 20 years now about the issue. But she knows that the greatest challenge is yet to come. It's, okay, the test results come in, now you have to get on their property and let them know what the issue is and have them be on board to mitigate this problem. And she says that's the biggest, that's going to be the biggest hurdle.
I think that's going to be the biggest hurdle for, not only for your agricultural identifications, but if you find human contamination that's coming from, let's say, failed septic systems that maybe even the owner doesn't know, you know, then there's a whole other bunch of statutes that kick in about making sure that gets done. So, I guess the other part of this that I think is important is that if, if our seed money helps us identify this and opens up other grant opportunities for not only agriculture, but for the, for the private homeowner who may have to do, redo a septic system, that may be to a benefit to us as well. And then allow these, these people, then would probably give us better permission to get on their properties and try to, you know, take a look at what's going on. So I think it's important, and hopefully we can get that. I think I had that conversation with Mindy a while ago, for us to identify this, so.
There's other avenues of grants, too. This is strictly like DEP-based. This first round is the agricultural, and DEP is leading the charge on that.
Great.
But she, she identified, and even Henry, Henry's, you know, when he sat at the state level, he was part of that whole, you know, budgetary means for all that agricultural stuff. And so he's very well-versed as to what needs to be done on that end of it. And he said there's all kinds of avenues for funding on the septic system side.
Right. Well, that's good. And I hope the state doesn't lose focus on this with, with also with the PFAS identifications that they're having statewide right now. And I believe the governor is trying to put a substantial amount of ARPA funds into that to try to help these, these farmers in these areas for that. But just don't lose sight of it. I hope they don't lose sight of the river.
It's, she again expressed, though, that the town of Arundel is going to be a huge, from a municipal standpoint, is going to be a huge asset in this whole, like, Jim's going to have to be involved with the, you know, the code side of it. You're going to have to be involved with the, probably grant writing and...
I have no objections to that, as long as the money's there. Because when the, when the first study came out, I looked at the numbers, and they sort of shocked you, because, you know, if they think the municipality is going to, is going to pony up substantial amounts of money to do that, I think the debate publicly and locally would be pretty intense. So, hopefully, there's more money available for the grants to assist these properties in getting that, that stuff done.
Yeah, that's really all I got.
How, how does this work? I mean, if we put together a warrant article that says we'll contribute 7,500 bucks to who, what, how?
She's going to get me a more, I told her that the budget meeting was, I said Wednesday night, but I, Thursday. So she's going to get me a detailed takeoff as to exactly the funds needed before that meeting. So I'll have a better answer to that. But I would assume it's towards this York County Soil and Water. I would assume the funds would go to them, and then they'd disperse them, you know. And I, I think we could be clear in, you know, if we, if we ponyed up the $7,500, let's say, that we'd like to see that allocated to Arundel testing, not, just don't use it on the whole Kennybuck River test, you know what I mean?
That, that would be important, sure.
Yeah, the article would have to say specifically for the Arundel DNA test.
Right. Yeah.
Do you know if that DNA testing would pick up any of that PFAS stuff that might be in the water? Or is it strictly going after agricultural or human?
Yeah, it's strictly what it is. Yeah. Because that will, that will more or less clearly identify if it's, like, manure that's seeping into the water, or septic systems that have failed.
Or floss.
Yeah, we're already doing PFAS testing at our, at our transfer station, at the landfill. Yes. We instituted that within our testing cycle at the last time, just to identify it. Right now, based on the wells that they've identified, we have none right now. But that could change. So, I'd like to try to stay ahead of it, if we possibly can.
We didn't spread any, any stuff, any info, like, any...
Well, this PFAS stuff, you know, they're saying that it came from, it's come from the land spreading of, you know, the sewage, but it comes from a variety of plastic materials that have gotten buried, and that kind of stuff, plus a lot of other items that we use every day. So, I think this is a pretty large problem, that's probably all statewide, and we'll have to wait and see how this all flushes out. As I recollect, we're also dealing with the Bitterford Plume, or whatever, that well, that's coming down towards our wells, is that, this.
From the Andrews well?
Yep.
Yeah. Definitely coming down.
Right.
Yeah. From the old Bitterford.
Right. Yep. Well, you know, it's funny, because I know a lot of communities are discussing this, and, you know, at some point, I think these water districts are going to be intimately involved in the whole thing, because folks are going to need water, and clean water. So, we'll see how it all goes. Okay, moving on then, managers' report, beginning with asbestos abatement. Yeah, I just have a few things, I just will follow up with you folks on. The asbestos abatement RFPs, obviously, as I said, they're out, they'll be back on the, I believe, on the 18th, so they'll be ready for reopening at your following meeting. Right now, we've had two companies that have contacted us, and I've asked for the survey material, which I've sent to them. They, hopefully, they'll get back to us. And I also believe that the company who did our survey will also submit a bid on this project. So I'm hoping that at least we'll have three bids that will come in for this work. So, we'll hold our breath on that. The surplus office equipment, not many inquiries. I've had three inquiries, one local, one from Fredericksburg, Virginia, and the other one from Ontario, Canada. So, once I identified specifically what we had, the two from away sort of went away. And so, I have photographs, I had one gentleman reach out to me today via email. I sent him a follow-up. Hopefully, we'll get somebody else locally that will be interested as well. So, we'll see how that, that goes. The American Rescue Plan Funds, as I indicated at the last budget meeting, right now, I have ten of Lee, and I'll share that with you on Thursday's meeting, I have four warrant articles that have been established for approval of use of some of those funds. That will still leave us a bunch of funds that selectmen do boys can look at at another time to maybe probably use. But it would give us a healthy start, and probably a little bit of understanding. The devil will be in the details, because the Treasury Department certainly is going to want detailed analysis. So, the individual warrant articles, even though there is some debate whether some municipalities are taking a position that, that there's not a need for it, I believe that it's the best way to go, because then you're going to get individual approval per warrant article on specific issues that we can share with the government, and then show them where that money's been spent, as opposed to having a carte blanche and then trying to scramble to see where all the funds were gone. So, I think it's the wisest way to proceed. And I'll share that with you guys on Thursday. The other thing I had on hand, this is something that John Bell has been working with Ann on, as well as myself, I got pulled in late last week. Right now, when documents are uploaded onto the website, there's an ability for people to look at those documents. Some of them are so large that they can't be uploaded, because we've got items on there in storage that are taking up space. So, our thought was, and I'm sure John will probably weigh in a little bit about this tonight, our thought was removing some of the older information that's on the website for minutes, agendas, those, those types of things, to free up additional space, so we can store other stuff that's more recent back on the website, so people want to look at it. It doesn't deny a, the public from coming in to say, you know, I want to look at your minutes from 2020, or 2010. They're not on the website. Well, they can come in, and that information is here in written form, and they certainly can get ahold of it. But the convenience of having it on the line sort of gets skewed, because we don't have all the storage. So, I'll have John talk a little bit about it. What I initial thought was, keep five years' worth on the website, the rest of it can be removed. Folks need it, they can, they can get it here. We can give a note and provide that. The other thing we had today was discussion on how much we actually play, pay for the website, and how much it would cost for extra storage. And John may have some answers to that tonight. May have to turn that on, John. Make sure the green light's on.
Basically, this problem came about when Ann requested that we set up some kind of...
What our initial thought was keep five years' worth on the website, the rest of it can be removed. Folks need it, they can get it here. We can give a note and provide that. The other thing we had today was discussion on how much we actually pay for the website and how much it would cost for extra storage, and John may have some answers to that tonight. May have to turn that on, John. Make sure the green light's on.
Basically, this problem came about when Ann requested that we set up some kind of system for keeping planning board off the website for extended periods. Some of the deals offered, the hosties thing, the store, the building, a couple of five more meetings, like four, three, available space on the website. Available space that we have left, five more meetings, a little bit of quick half, some people, some people will say, right, we've shot, we've run out of space on the website sometime this fall. I would discuss taking some of the older existing documents on our website, making things about even talking to the officials and waiting for the government to find it out. Do that, probably, this disaster, what size, five or three. Same, that's the way, cut things back to five years, quite wide, you know, eight to twelve months at a time, some space to apply. Since people I talked, I told Gov Office, website post to ask how to cast the rest of store, basically, two hundred and fifty dollars to begin double stores that. Anybody felt that spent two hundred and fifty bucks, what we can sprawl, probably a couple of five years, like that, I'm sure a lot of them.
So is the one-time charge, two hundred and fifty dollars?
Those, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, right now it's what, about twenty-six hundred or twenty-eight hundred dollars?
They, they said over the teeth was vision, it's not.
Oh.
So I don't know.
Okay.
Really, it won't be.
We'll have to go back and look again. I thought that they gave you the Gov Office stuff.
I'll be giving the vision.
Okay.
Open support is the, at the board, what it will for two years, the website has never come off.
It hasn't.
I don't know, I don't make it out of the book.
Right. I'll double-check it.
Anyway, this whole part could be a whole different one, could be a part of the deal as well. I would just mention one other thing, the website is getting a little old and there are some problems. Trying to get some, back to picking someone, the website, the office, the office, about vision score, fail of the down, it is pretty hard to, you know, the other one, I feel it, probably operate the whole site.
Did you hear what he said?
No, I didn't hear it.
American Rescue.
American Rescue.
Hey, so we keep paper copies of everything?
If it's been, if it's a meeting and minutes have been approved, we have them forever.
Right.
But I don't keep, I don't keep a video log of all the videos unless a board says we're going to make the video part of the record.
Right.
And then we'd have to, we'd be obligated to keep it. So, but right now we have it on YouTube and I think there's a bunch on there and I'm not sure when they come off.
Well, I was just going to say, for the best of my knowledge, YouTube is never believed that it belongs. I have stuff on YouTube that's been there for six, seven years.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all this keeping record of, 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 case of video, right, that's all the websites linked to that.
Correct.
Want to make sure.
Right. Unless somebody, well, again, I think it'd be redundant unless it's been approved by the board to make it part of the record. If it's not part of the record, then I go by whatever approved minutes you have and that's it. That's what gets recorded, that's what gets given to the town clerk, that's what she puts in her book. And if somebody goes back to refer what happened on that meeting and what votes were taken, they'll be there.
So as far as everything that we keep paper, I mean, obviously it's, it gets put into the vault. I mean, we've got a much bigger vault now than we had before. Haven't really looked inside that vault to see how much room we have in there, but is there any reason why instead of keeping paper, we wouldn't put everything digital and keep it on a, keep it on a hard drive, you know, a, a, a hard drive?
You certainly can. I've looked into that and we looked into it before we were building the building about, there was a company, the name is missing, I'm missing the name right now, but they're in upstate New York. They would come down and they would photograph all of, all your records and then go back to New York and put together a digital file. And those digital files would then be provided to you along with your written stuff. So you'd have a backup, you'd have a digital file plus your stuff. And then, you know, right now in our budget, we're redoing two of the older books now of our town reports and books and record-keeping desks, burrs, all those kinds of things. Those could also be digital, but I think it's nice to have the book as well as reference materials. So there's really to do it.
Do we have a computer set up anywhere in this town hall where the public can come in? Like to Dan's point, if we had a terabyte hard drive in the vault, would that be plugged into like a laptop or?
There's a public, there's a public computer in the planning, land use office on the counter.
On the counter.
And primarily it's used by folks coming in to reference any material, but a lot of our stuff is now getting put online. So most of the appraisers are doing their work online as opposed to coming in and visiting. But yeah, you could have a access point there if you needed it.
So, I mean, if we had like an FOA, if somebody wanted something that would be easier, if it was digital rather than paper or?
Yeah, it could be. The debate we get with digital is that if you get a FOIA request, somebody says, you know, I'd like to have the minutes, all the minutes from two thousand and three, all the selectmen's minutes. And, you know, can you email it to me? Well, email isn't addressed that much in the statute. So, you know, not only are we supposed to option the time, there's an hour of time that we give, and then after that where there's a charge for that, plus there's a charge for the copies. Well, everybody wants it digital now because they want to get around paying for it. So that, you know, whether the law, whether the statute's going to catch up to that, maybe Tom can address that a lot more than me because I don't think they're going to catch up to it very often. But based on the amount of time that we have people asking for it, it hasn't been that much of a burden to staff to put that stuff together yet.
So, you know, we, we call up and say, say, one more minute for, they can pull right on the website. It's supposed to be five days.
Right. Right. Right, I think the only issue to that is I'm not quite sure if you're, what's being put on the website has been signed off on, you know, because if they come here, they will get a, they'll get an approved copy of the minutes that have been approved by the board and then signed. So, you know, by me, I usually, at the end, once you guys approve them, I sign off on them, give them to the clerk, she puts them in the book. So unless she's giving them to you with my signature on them.
I think that's, I think, that's, that's.
That's great then.
I would say they shouldn't be on there without.
That's for sure.
Right. So to your point, if they're signed, then they're getting the original document. I'll talk with Emily tomorrow, I'm sure she's, that's what she's doing, but I've never asked her, you know, because she'll, sometimes she'll ask me, have you sent John the minutes yet? And I said, no, and then she'll take care of it. Well, we'll leave it up to the clerk to keep us in line. The other thing that I had was, I just wanted to chat a little bit about the letter that, it's kind of interesting. I got this letter, it says, it says my name, but it says town manager and it was sent to us here at the office. So, but I see that the letter to me is more about trying to gather funds to battle the federal government in reference to some of the restrictions they're putting on the fishery when it comes to the right whales. Now, when I looked at it, and the reason I put it on here is that I'm, this is my own fin, I don't know how the board feels about it, but even weigh in, but my fundamental position on this is that this isn't something the town should be giving money to because you'd be spending public money for a cause, which I think the cause is right. And by the way, I'm probably going to send them a hundred dollar check of my own personal money because I think that it's a good thing to fight. But we may have residents in the town that are objectional to what the lobster associate, Maine Lobster Men's Association is trying to attempt here. So I would be opposed to sending public funds for this, but I would encourage you, if you agree with it, to send your own public, your private money to it if you so desire. That's my position. I don't know what the position of the board is, but I wanted to share that with you. When I got it, it sort of gave me a red flag because it had my name on it, but it said town manager, and I didn't know if they were referencing, and it was sent to here, to the office. So I didn't know if they wanted you as a municipal government to get involved or they were just asking me for the money. So.
You could make a separate warrant article just for this. That would be forwarded by the town.
Right, because he said we're asking the Arundel community to consider making significant contributions. So it's not you, it's the town.
Right. So I'm not sure how you want to handle it. You know, for me, personally, I, you know, I'm in favor of what they're attempting to do based on everything that I've read and the people that I've spoken to, that I know a few fishermen that have been in the business for a long time. So I'm going to support them personally, but.
Any comments, anybody? I mean.
I'm sure we have. President's here that are fishing and that are watching. We call a handful.
I'm sure we do, and I'm sure we have other conservationists that are worried about the right whales out there, you know.
It just appears to me that it gets you into a political debate that you may or may not want to be into.
Yeah, when you draw the line.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the public.
They find out about this, the right whale, they come up and ask us for money and, you know, like, like the funds that we give every year to the various agencies.
Right.
And this is to pay legal fees, is what I'm reading, right?
Right. Right.
So maybe some people ought to be working pro bono or some of my brothers.
Yeah, but if they're going to be taking on the federal government, I doubt they're going to do a lot of pro bono work.
I know.
All right, I'll do my part, thank you.
Okay, on to business. We have a discussion on the charter review and the public hearing we are scheduled to have on.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that, I think, not this week, but next week. I didn't know if there was anything else. Velma, I had, I had sent out some information because Donna had asked me to, and then Velma reached out to me this afternoon and said, can you make me hard copy? And I figured if I'm going to make her one, I'll make you all a hard copy. So I provided a hard copy to you all. And unless there's any changes in it, that certainly, as I put on the top, would be referenced to our public hearing version. John has already publicized the public hearing on the eleventh, it's on the website, based on the document that we shared at the last meeting. So I think we're all set to go in reference to that and I'll sort of leave it up to everybody else after that.
You don't have an opinion back yet on the ballot question, do you?
Excuse me?
Have you got an opinion back yet on?
I have not yet, no. I'm hoping to have that by our next meeting so we can sort of wrap that up. As I indicated to you, I have to at least have some sort of direction by April seventh for the town clerk, when she makes her initial information to the folks that are developing the ballot for the machine and all that, has to be there. They said they can fine-tune it for about eight to 10 days and then after that it's finalized. So we've got some runway, but we'll have to wait and see.
Okay, approval of a just payable, Mark?
A moment.
Second.
Whatever. Okay, is there any other business? Anybody? Just Phil.
When will the planning board start meeting in person here?
I asked that question to the planning board chair. He indicated to me that he's going to take it to the planning board as a group, which as I understand, he did. They have asked the contract planner to develop a response and provide a position that they would like to share with the municipal officials prior to them making that change. I guess there's some pushback with some of the folks on the planning board because they feel that they get more participation, they're far more productive. There was also questions on the acoustics of the room, some of them couldn't hear well. So those were some of the objections that I was hearing, but I'm going to wait for Lijay's memo to us and I'll share it with you folks. But as I told Lijay today, and I would tell the planning board chairman this if he asked me, that I believe they need to be back in this room conducting their business regardless of what they think they should or should not do. I think the emergency is over and they need to be back. So Phil, that would be, that was my instructions to Lijay. I know he's meeting with the chairman of the planning board and we'll have something in our hands here, I think, in our next meeting. So I'm going to still push it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thought we adopted a policy for that, no?
We adopted a policy, yes, and the policy provides some flexibility to some of the members in the event that they're sick or out of town or things like that. I can share the policy with you folks again. If you remember, I'll have it with me tonight. Remember it was a standard MMA policy that was put together by main municipal that we adopted. So yes, we have adopted one.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so too.
And the other thing is, I think some of the reason that they stayed.
And the other thing is, I think some of the reason that they stayed that way is because even though there was a policy there, towns around us were still doing it via Zoom or whatever. So they said, oh, we're not going to get in trouble. We'll stay this way. I don't know, I don't know how that is today. I don't know if Kenabon, Kenabon Ford or the guys are back together or?
Well, I, I'm not sure, but that's immaterial to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, as I mentioned to.
This is the town of Arundel and we adopted a policy.
As I, as I mentioned to Lee J. today, I think this particular board continued to meet through the pandemic. We took steps to be apart. And I think the leadership of the board is sort of setting the tone as to what we expect from the rest of our boards.
And I think there's a legal requirement to do so too. Just saying. You know, you're right.
They have them just spread out.
Oh, absolutely.
Anything else, anyone? Second? On favor.